Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining this candidates forum sponsored by the Montgomery County Civic Federation. This evening we'll be hearing from the candidates for Montgomery County Council Member at Large. Our moderators for this evening are Amanda Farber from the East Bethesda Civic Citizens Association, and Paul Guinessy from the Park Hills Civic Association in East Silver Spring. I'd like to turn it over to Amanda Farber now for introductions and the rules. Thank you all for joining us this evening.
Yes, thank you all for attending, candidates and Zoom participants alike. Appreciate your patience with getting this Zoom started. And as Alan said, we know this is a federal holiday and it's a gorgeous evening outside. So we're extra appreciative that you are here. We wanted to note that we are officially less than a month away from the primary election, which will be held on July 19th, and early voting starts July 7th. And mail-in ballots are starting to go out. This is also a good chance to remind everyone joining this evening that there have been other forums held by various organizations focused on different topics. And there will be additional ones coming up. And many of these are recorded, as this one is, as Alan mentioned. So if a topic or a question is not covered this evening, then it likely has been covered or will be covered during another forum or meeting. But we want to be respectful of everybody's times and time and questions. So let me go through the format very quickly. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to introduce themselves. Each candidate will then have two minutes to respond to each question unless otherwise noted. And you'll get a 15-second warning as you approach the two minutes to finish your sentence. So thank you to Jackie for that. There'll be no rebuttal time due to the number of candidates and questions, but candidates will have one minute to make closing comments at the end. We do have a lot of candidates and several questions that have come in. But audience members can also put questions in the chat. So we're going to get started with introductions and go through in alphabetical order. And then we're going to rotate through that order as we go through the rest of the questions. So starting us tonight with a minute and a half. Jackie, if you're ready, we will start with Gabe Albernaz. So go ahead, Gabe.
Great. Well, thank you all so much. I really want to appreciate the Civic Federation's work. I always enjoy our meetings together and really appreciate the thoughtful due diligence that goes into all of your questions and the many letters we've received from you throughout the entire year, which are important and noted. So for those of you that don't know me, I am a lifelong resident of Montgomery County, the proud son of two immigrants from South America that met his students at Montgomery College. And growing up, I lived in Gaithersburg, Silver Spring, and Bethesda, and now live in Kensington with my wife Catherine and our dog Coco, who is by my feet right now. And Happy Father's Day to everybody out there who celebrated yesterday. And Happy Juneteenth today is an extraordinarily special and historic day across our country. And I had the privilege and honor of attending a number of Juneteenth events over the weekend. I'm running for reelection because I love this county. I love public service. I still get so much energy from it. And I've dedicated my career to it, having worked in a legate administration, running a big department through the recession, and now chairing the HHS Committee and serving along all of my colleagues as we've dealt with the pandemic. While I can't see I've seen everything, I've certainly seen a lot. And I want to bring that experience with me of building bridges and tackling tough challenges to this next council, which will have, of course, at least five new members. And with a heavy turnover in our central staff at the council, the experience now is going to matter more than ever. So thank you all very much, and I look forward to answering tonight.
Great, thank you so much. Next, we have Brandy Brooks. Brandy, you have a minute and a half for your introduction.
Thank you, everyone, so much. It's great to see so many folks here. And I always love how active and engaged members of the Civic Fed are in really thinking and talking about the issues and opportunities that are facing our county. Again, my name is Brandy Brooks. I am a racial equity and housing and environmental justice consultant and organizer living in Kensington, and I'm very excited to be running for County Council at Large. And again, as we are celebrating this holiday of Juneteenth, I think one of the critical things for us to remember is that so much of what determines whether or not people are able to live with justice and dignity, are able to live and see equitable opportunities, is based in the decisions that have been made by public policymakers throughout the history of our country. And here in Montgomery County, we're continuing to wrestle with the challenge of how we build public policy that actually brings equity fully into being. This is something that I've committed my life's work to, not just in sort of thinking about policy, but in organizing directly with folks who are most severely impacted by the kinds of disparities that we've seen even prior to COVID, but certainly that we've seen exacerbated by COVID. And I look forward to talking with you all tonight about how we make the commitment to equity, not just statements, but action.
Thank you so much. Evan Glass, you are next.
Good evening, everybody. It is good to be here and see so many friends who I've worked with in various capacities over the years. Before serving on the council, I was president of two civic associations. And so I appreciate your advocacy and the work that you all do to make Montgomery County an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. For those of you who don't know me, I served as a journalist. I worked as a journalist at CNN for 12 years before getting involved in Montgomery County politics. And it is my journalism background that carries with me my focus on oversight and accountability and asking tough questions from the council or one of the two committees that I serve on. I serve on both the Health and Human Services and also the Transportation and Environment Committee. And as we celebrate Juneteenth today, we have to keep that spirit in mind as we move forward, as we come out of the pandemic, making sure that we don't forget the injustices and the inequities that we saw.
15 seconds.
The disparities in healthcare, the disparities in housing, the disparities in transportation. And I look forward to discussing all of those things with you as we work to make Montgomery County an even better place over the next four years. So thank you.
Bye. Thank you. Next, Scott Goldberg.
Happy Monday, everyone. It is absolutely great to be here. So normally, I would go through this little routine of saying I'm a dad Democrat attorney and small business owner. And I think it's incredibly interesting, but in reality, it's probably not. But I'm going to talk about the last few hours that have happened in my life. So I walk through the front door home to get dinner with my family. And my wife says, Scott Reed, who's our seven-year-old son, tested positive for COVID. He's healthy. He's asymptomatic. He's doing okay. He gets to watch a screen, so he's having a great time. But that's not the only surprise. Also, there was a stray dog that was in our backyard that we were trying to find the owner for. And so I picked up, I got a bag because I haven't had COVID, moving in with a friend, which is just a way of saying, you know, the next council is going to have at least five new people on it. And a lot of times, our political discussions can bring out the worst in people. But I think there's an opportunity to bring out the best in people. And I think a good mix of council members of the 11 will be people that can roll with the punches, will be people that can smile on the face of adversity, will be people that can think quickly, not get discouraged, and can work well together. There is a wealth of information on my website, which is www.votescott.org, and I look forward to this evening's conversation.
COVID diagnosis, and also another reminder of why it's good that we still have Zoom option to all get together. So next is Tom Hucker.
Thanks, Amanda. Scott wishing him a speedy recovery. Thanks, everybody at the Civic Federation for all your advocacy and for putting this together. Your hard work every year produces a better county than we would have if you weren't working so hard. I've been proud to work in partnership with many of you for years. The most recent example was working with some of your leaders to amend and improve the Silver Spring Downtown and Adjacent Communities Plan to fight for more tree cover and more logical boundaries. Very supportive of your mission and always happy to hear your feedback, whether it's about how we can make WSSC more accountable, how to protect our neighborhoods or preserve our tree canopy. I come to this work as a trained public interest advocate and community organizer. And so I've been bringing people together to make the government more responsive my whole life. I'm a longtime resident in Montgomery County, where I live with my wife and two kids that I bring to a public elementary school every day. And I represented Montgomery County as a state lawmaker for eight years before being elected to the County Council. In that role, I worked with many of you to bring home state funding to Montgomery County to have tax fairness, so Montgomery County could get our fair share of state aid, to fight to make PEPCO more reliable, and to expand the Open Meetings Act. And having relationships and efforts to win funding and reforms is a big asset I can bring to this role. I've been twice elected by my colleagues to serve as Council Vice President and President during very difficult circumstances the last two years. I want to return to the council because, as Gabe said, we're going to need experienced people on the council to make sure we can capitalize on all the opportunities we have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Will Juwondo, you are next.
Good evening, everybody. Happy Juneteenth. It is an important, important day, and, you know, the newest federal holiday. And I updated my background here because I think it's important that we talk about it and recognize all that it means. I wrote a piece in New York Daily News about the conflation of Juneteenth and Father's Day falling on the same day. So check it out. I think it's really important to where we are in our country right now. Good to be with you. Appreciate your advocacy. And I'm a council member at large, serving the Education and Culture Committee and the Planning Housing Economic Development Committee. Born and raised in Silver Spring, I'm a civil rights attorney by trade. My wife and I, Michelle, have four children that are here in the county where we've always been. I've fought really hard over the last four years to bring up the issues that really matter around education, around criminal justice reform, introducing some of the first bills ever introduced in that area, renter protections, affordable housing, making sure our small businesses have what they need to grow and thrive and get through the pandemic, and making sure our neighbors can eat by setting up some of the first large food distributions that we've had in the county. We have a lot to do. We've done a lot over the last four years, but there's a lot, a lot to do. So look forward to the conversation tonight and hope to earn all of your votes. Thank you.
And next, we have Lori Ann Sales.
So good evening, everyone. My name is Lori Ann Sales. I'm a former Gaithersburg Council member, mother of an MCPS graduate, and very excited to talk more about why I'm running for Montgomery County County Council at Large. I have a smart agenda that has been endorsed by countless organizations, including Progressive Maryland, Progressive Neighbors, and Sierra Club, our educators as well. And so at this very difficult time in our county's history, we have a lot of changes ahead of us and a lot is at stake. We always talk about how important our elections are, and this one is no different. Everything from our students' futures with an 800 educator exodus to affordable housing with countless shortages in our affordable housing supply and a lack of affordable rentals, a lack of affordable developments, food insecurity, transportation challenges.
15 seconds.
Climate change. We have many challenges before us. And I look forward to talking with you more this evening about how my smart agenda will position our economy for the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for those introductions. And now we're going to jump right into the questions. I'm going to start off with two of the questions that have come in and then trade off with Paul. I will tell you for this first one, we are going to stick to the same alphabetical order, and then we will start to rotate through. So this first question is... They get two minutes for this? This is, yes, you get two minutes. And you will also get a 15-second warning for these. We are now a county with over 1 million residents across over 500 square miles. And as an at-large council member, you'll be responsible for representing the entire county. Trust and transparency are important issues noted as of late across all levels of government, including the local level. In the role of at-large County Council member, what would you do to improve trust and transparency of and accountability within county government? And we're going to start with Gabe Albernaz. You have two minutes, and you will get a 15-second warning.
Sorry about that. I had some technical difficulties. Thank you so much for the question. And yes, transparency and trust is so critical because it is so precious. And when you lose it, it's almost impossible to get back. Montgomery County has established a high bar for generations for good governance, and we have to make sure that that is maintained. So about four or five months ago, the IG came back with a report expressing some concerns in some decisions that had been made in the decision-making process and some transparency issues within our Park and Planning Commission. While I have a great deal of respect for Chairman Anderson and the work of his colleagues, and we've worked together for a number of years, I thought it was important for us to uplift this issue. And so I did send a letter on behalf of the council expressing our concern about the transparency within our planning process. And he has responded to that, and they are making changes moving forward to address that issue moving forward. But it's important that we ensure that we hold all of ourselves accountable. We have a lot of new technology available to us. And I can't tell you how many instances that we've been in where my colleagues and I have decided not to meet because we wanted to make sure that we did not run afoul of any of the rules with regards to too many council members meeting at the same time. So we have to make sure that we hold ourselves to the highest possible standards. And we have to make sure that the bodies that are responsible for overseeing have the resources that they need to be successful. With the lack of local media now.
15 seconds.
It really is critically important that our inspector general and their office has the support that they need to be able to carry out their work effectively, and I've supported an increase in their budget.
Thank you. Next, Brandy Brooks.
So trust, transparency, and accountability, all of these things are ultimately rooted in relationship. And we have to acknowledge, if we are honest, that for many people, their relationship with government, including local government, is not great. There are a lot of folks who aren't feeling that their voices are being effectively heard, that their concerns are being effectively responded to, that they are prioritized in conversations about the policy that shapes our lives every day. And there are important tools and mechanisms that we use for accountability or for transparency. But beyond those tools and mechanisms, it's actually about an orientation to how elected officials want to be in relationship with the people they represent. Is it something where we deeply understand that being in deep relationship with community members results in better decision-making? Or is it something where that process of engaging people and really understanding what's going on in their lives is considered a thing that you have to get through so that you can actually go to do the work that you would rather do? My work as an organizer and as a consultant has been about building deeply participatory and deeply accountable public policy processes for more than 15 years, actually involving community members as decision-makers on critical policy issues and creating a wide variety of ways that people can effectively and meaningfully participate and where information can be effectively and meaningfully shared so that people understand how and why decisions are being made. That's my orientation as an organizer, as a community member who wants transparency and accountability. And that will be the orientation that I bring to County Council, as well as the experience about how you bring built systems that actually make that kind of accountability and transparency and engagement possible.
Time. Thank you. Next is Evan Glass.
Thank you for the question, Amanda. Transparency and accountability are, and the search for it, are why I became a journalist, why I came down to DC from New York to attend American University, and why I spent 12 years covering Congress and the federal government and presidential campaign, searching for the truth and making sure that people had the truth and had access to our elected officials. And here I am, all those years later, on the varied journey of life as an at-large member of the County Council. But the core tenants of my being are about making sure that government works best for our residents. And it does have to have trust. And that is why I've been working with so many of you and continue to work with you all and have phone calls and meetings, and I'm always accessible to talk about what is happening. And that is what I think is just a central tenant to government and to local government. It's about that communication. But, you know, taking it one step further, it's also why I'm participating in the county's public financing system because I don't want anyone to think that anybody owns me. The reality is, I'm not accepting contributions from political action committees or corporations or checks with lots of zeros attached to it. That's why I go into living rooms and kitchens and coffee shops having conversations with all of you because you are the central tenant to my campaign, and it is an important function of our relationship in office. And so transparency, accountability, trust, public financing, they're all who I am. And I hope you all know that.
Thank you. Next, Scott Goldberg.
What a great question because it gives me the opportunity to give out myself on a number. The first thing that I thought of to answer this was how people say, especially when we're talking about the federal government, how Congress is broken. Well, I don't think Congress is broken or the system is broken. I think the people that we're sending to operate the system, we could do a better job. And fortunately, you have eight great choices to send to Rockville. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to be the person that you know. So you can always call me on my cell phone, 301-237-4950. You'll always be able to email me. At least once a month, we are going to open up our office in the council office building for people to come by and have coffee. And probably a billion times a month, we are going to go out into the community and have meetings, invite people to come talk about their issues or simply to get to know each other and get to know me. Because that's more important, in my opinion, than the details of an issue. It's can you trust this person? Do you share their values? Do they share your values? I'm also a proud participant in the public financing system. So again, we can only take small amounts of money from essentially county residents or what we focus on. We fight for $5, $10, $15, $25 contributions. And it's all publicly disclosed. You can see everything. And we can only accept contributions from individuals. And lastly, the inspector general's office is in its infancy. But it has been incredibly effective when it does find something going on and makes it public and does a very thorough job of reporting it. So moving forward, I think that is the model to build upon so that we can have even more trust and transparency in the legislative branch.
Thank you. Tom Hucker, you're next.
Thanks, Amanda. So, boy, I wish we had more than two minutes. Trust and transparency are very, very important to me. I came to elected office after working as a public interest advocate for many, many years, working on government accountability issues, among others, both at the federal level and the state level. While I ran the council as the elected vice president and the president in 2020 and 21, we were dealing with incredibly difficult circumstances, right? The worst recession since the Great Depression and the worst public health crisis since the flu of 1918. And we weren't ready for either one. We didn't plan for either one adequately. We didn't have a manual. And there were those who thought we were going to have to just do the basics and restrict our public input and just move the government ahead without all the usual protocols. And there were other local governments that scaled back considerably. But we could not meet in person, of course. But I insisted, and Council President Katz before me insisted on meeting in Zoom. And in 2021, instead of having less testimony than ever, we actually received more testimony than we ever had in history. I also tried to insist on tight compliance with the Open Meetings Act for the council and added multiple work sessions on controversial legislation and on the growth decisions to allow for more public input, even though we were under very difficult constraints. And I agree with Gabe about everything he said about the Open Meetings Act concerns by Park and Planning. Moving forward, what can we do better? I want to continue what we're doing now. And I think Gabe's doing a great job as council president in both we're taking testimony in person and on Zoom, which we never had. We're now coming out of, I've been a long believer, a longtime believer. We should add in childcare to make sure working families with kids can testify in person in front of us. And we should move meetings around the county and work sessions on land use as well, so everyone can participate. I've expanded.
All right, thank you. Will Juwondo, you're next.
Thank you. So this question was kind of perfectly teed up for me in that the first bill introduced by this council is a number and then there's a year. So the first bill of this council, we were all sworn in on December 4th, 2018. The first bill introduced was Bill 119, which was the Law Enforcement, Trust, and Transparency Act, which I introduced on Martin Luther King's birthday, January 15th, 2019, which was about improving the trust and transparency when a police officer takes the life of a resident. And we all know, especially this group, we've had several unarmed people, particularly African-American men, killed in our community. Robert White was the one that had just happened prior to this bill introduction. And the bill has now passed and now has become state law in that we have statewide independent investigations by the Attorney General. But that's an example of the type of transparency that's needed when the government has immense power. In this case, it's the power to detain and deprive of liberty and to take life by police officers. But there's so many examples of government power. We vest that power in our government officials to keep us safe, to make sure that we abide by the social contract. But there must be trust and transparency. Otherwise, it doesn't work. And it's something that is a constant vigilant effort. A civil rights lawyer, a public policy attorney, worked in various levels of government and in the corporate sector. I put it as a paramount. Again, it was my first bill. I've worked really hard in my office to make sure our staff goes deep into the community and gets outreach and engagement, and it's very transparent about what we're doing. And I think we can always improve. But I just wanted to say that this is a very important issue. I'll continue to do it. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Lori Ann Sales.
So I wanted to prioritize trust, leadership, and my tested experience when I put out my palm card or whenever I talk about my role in government. You know, I know that there are certain misconceptions about public officials. You know, there's already misconceptions of distrust. We're watching the insurrection hearing play out and all the things that happen behind the scenes with people who were sworn into office to uphold the Constitution and the law. And I believe that as elected officials, we're held to an even higher standard. That's why annually, we had to sign an ethics disclosure to find out, are we accepting gifts? Are we, you know, accepting gifts from people that we're doing business with? Are we voting on contracts? Are we having to recuse ourselves from votes when they know they are in conflict with our ethics, with our values? And so this role has to have people who are ethical, people who can be trusted when people are not looking, people who can be trusted with the public resources. We have over a $6 billion... We have over a six billion dollar budget of resources, and so whether that means we need to um, publicize our calendars about who we're meeting with. Someone suggested that to me when I was knocking on the doors. They're like, they do that for the president. They do that for federal elected officials. Why doesn't, why isn't that happening at the local level? Um, and so there are many things that we can do. The Open Meetings Act, uh, public financing, MD Chris can show every resident that has contributed to my campaign. Cause I haven't accepted any contributions from special interests or any dark money.
I'm sorry, time, please. Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that we have now reached ninety-five participants. So it's probably good that we upgraded the Zoom account here, um, because we have a pretty nice turnout right now. Um, going right into the next question, this will also be um, you will be allowed a two-minute answer to this one with a fifteen-second warning. Um, we have a question on Thrive Montgomery twenty fifty, which you all probably could have guessed, there would be a question on this. Uh, Thrive Montgomery is the county's new proposed general plan, which may be passed by the current council by October twenty-fifth or extended. Thrive recommends allowing additional density in many parts of the county, but it quote, does not in and of itself change land uses, zoning, or transportation. Key to implementing Thrive Montgomery twenty fifty, Montgomery County will need to undertake a variety of future actions. So in terms of those actions, do you support increasing density by changing zoning using countywide zoning text amendments? Or through the area master plan process? And how can the council ensure that infrastructure keeps pace in priority funding areas as density is increased? This question will go first to Brandy Brooks.
Great. So Congress, a question where we're getting into some of the weeds of how we're we're going to to implement thrive. And so I think that if I understand this question, just let me just make sure the two focuses of the question are on um, uh, using zoning text amendments versus the area plans, countywide zoning text amendments versus the area plans. And then how to ensure that investment happens in priority areas that infrastructure keeps up. Is that correct?
Correct.
Perfect. Um, so I think the, I think in in response to the first question, and I know folks don't always like this, but there's not a blanket answer to that. Um, part of it does depend on what we're talking about in terms of the way that density increases. And I think tying back to the the previous question, there's so much of this that is about actually having deeper conversations with community members about what the real impacts of a zoning text amendment or a change to an area plan are going to be. Um, I think the value of our area plans is that in a lot of cases, they allow us to really do much more targeted uh, massaging of how we do land use. That is particular to the amenities and infrastructure and, you know, development plans for a specific region, rather than using one tool across the entire county. Um, there may also be instances, however, where a countywide zoning text amendment is what makes sense because it helps further our goals. And so that's a hard one to to answer, you know, just um, without the context of a specific decision. Um, one of the things that I will say is that when it comes to that accountability about how these things are, how we do investment. One of the things that I've always supported is that if we are going to allow
Fifteen seconds.
increased development in a location, that it has to be paired with strong planning for infrastructure. And that includes our schools, that includes our um, roadways, that includes public transit, that includes public utilities. And those things have to happen before development happens, not
Time. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Evan Glass, you're next.
Amanda, can you just reiterate the two different parts of the question?
Yes. Um, do you support increasing density by changing zoning using countywide zoning text amendments? Or through the area master plan process? And how can the council ensure that infrastructure keeps pace in priority funding areas as density is increased?
Thank you. Um, a complicated question, which is why I wanted to make sure I understood it correctly. My my preference is to do zoning based on certain areas and to do it through the master plan process or to do it through the sector plan process. Um, you know, that way we can actually use um, a a fine needle to work with that community and to figure out what the amenities in that neighborhood might be, what transit options already exist. Um, but that said, there are sometimes times when uh, there are things that we need to do countywide. And and I will say that I introduced a zoning text amendment that actually expands composting opportunities on farms. And it was a countywide ZTA because it mostly uh, supports farming in the agricultural reserve. But it also supports farms like Coiner Farm in downtown Silver Spring. And so in an instance like that, having a countywide ZTA was the best use if we want to continue supporting uh, composting, reducing our waste and being as environmentally friendly as possible. Now, with the other half of that question, uh, we need to, I think, have have really tough conversations about our budget, about our capital improvement projects to make sure that over the next six years, the lifespan of our CIPs, that we uh, have the resources to accommodate our growing community, uh, our growing community. You know, we have one point one million residents here in Montgomery County. The census that just required us to to do redistricting, the census showed that we grew about eight percent. And we're not building walls around Montgomery County. So as we continue, as we continue allowing people from all across the world to move here and work here and raise their families. We need to figure out what resources we're allocating to make our lives as enriching as possible.
Thank you, Scott Goldberg.
I think this question is is relatively easy to answer for me. Um, I I don't think we should have one-size-fits-all uh, density and zoning rules. I think it should be done on a hyper-local level, just as we just did in the last couple of weeks in downtown Silver Spring and will continue to do in other parts of downtown Silver Spring moving forward. Uh, and and the infrastructure is, many of us have lived here for quite some time, and even if you haven't, it's pretty easy to figure out. We like to build stuff before we build the infrastructure. Uh, look at schools. I mean, every day we talk about overcrowded schools. Uh, the priority needs to be infrastructure either first or infrastructure simultaneous simultaneously with the other things. Not building buildings first and then infrastructure after.
Thank you. Uh, Tom Hucker.
Thanks, Amanda. Um, well, let's start at the beginning. Um, we're legally required to have a general plan, and we have one now that was written and finalized in nineteen ninety-three. A lot of things have changed since nineteen ninety-three. Um, I, most of us, uh, I I should have been prepared with the uh, the the top hits of nineteen ninety-three, but um, uh, many, many things have changed. Um, the night, the plan from nineteen ninety-three doesn't mention climate, and it doesn't mention racial equity. Um, both of those concepts are really important to all of us, especially when we're doing land use now. Uh, people, when they were planning land use decisions in nineteen ninety-three, they weren't thinking about climate at all. Um, and we obviously need to to do so now. Of course, we need adequate infrastructure. Um, we have a law that requires it, and too often we don't enforce that law aggressively enough. But uh, much of the infrastructure that we build, uh, whether it's sidewalks or stormwater facilities or other things, are, let's be clear, paid for by housing builders. And they're often negotiated on a project-by-project level, just like in in White Oak. Um, when we approved the Viva White Oak Plan, um, the space was set aside for a school in White Oak. Because if you're gonna have more housing there, you need a school, a new school of uh, for the the children of everybody who lives in that area who doesn't right now. And that's, that's how it should be done. And that's how it's done well in Virginia and other counties. Um, and also, let's not be confused about smart growth. Build, putting more train, more housing near public transit, which is paid for by all of us, of course, whether you write it or not, has been the counties and the states and the regions' policy for two generations. It's called smart growth, and it's not new to thrive. There's a very good reason that there's more housing right now in downtown Silver Spring and downtown Bethesda, downtown Wheaton. Um, than there is in Spencerville or Sandy Spring because we have the infrastructure to support it and because we want those folks to ride transit and not be in front of all of us on the Beltway. Um, there's a lot in thrive that's terrific. The idea of having everything you need within fifteen
Time.
your home. Um, we, we're gonna have lots more feedback.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Will Juwondo.
Uh, yes, we need to have uh, the answer is, it's a complicated question, and you guys are really smart, so I I expect that from the Civic Fed. Uh, we need to have tools that allow us uh, to do both, depending on the situation. Um, you know, some things should be countywide, some, but the that should not upend the local planning, sector plan, master plan process. You know, I'm on the Fed Committee. I think I'm the one member running here that is on the Housing and Zoning Committee here. Uh, sat through, worked on Thrive for nine sessions, worked on several master plans, the Beers Mill Master Plan, obviously, most recently the Silver Spring and Adjacent Communities Plan. Uh, those are important processes, and you need to dig deep and make sure you're uh, in the weeds on it. Um, I do think infrastructure adequacy is something that is an issue. Uh, and every time that I've had the chance to push developers to pay more of their fair share or to contribute more, I do that. Uh, and to do what they say they're gonna do. I think the tools that we use to evaluate infrastructure adequacy uh, need to be reviewed from time to time. We went through such a process in the case of student generation. I think it was a worthwhile discussion. Uh, many of the members of the Civic Fed and PTAs and others were involved in that process. Uh, we need to make sure what we're saying, we're going to do and measuring what we're going to measure is actually right. Uh, you know, we can't fudge the numbers. If if we're saying people are gonna use transit because it's closer, we can't just say that and not really meet it and wink, wink, nod, nod. We need to make sure the infrastructure is there and it's funded and it's on the way uh, if we're going to build. Uh, and so I've pushed for that. I'll continue to push for that. Uh, but we do need transit-oriented development. And we do need uh, to accommodate our growing population, and we're gonna need to do innovative things like different types and sizes of housing where appropriate. Uh, and I think those are appropriate tools to get to those good outcomes.
Time. Thank you, Lori Ann Sales.
So the Okay, so the zoning tax amendments have to be considered on an individual case-by-case basis. Because of the topography of our county, uh, the downtown urban district, the ag reserve of county, um, you know, the concentration of density in Bethesda. Um, the lots of green space in East County, we have to look at how we're going to plan and develop our community in very unique ways. Um, as we're thinking about the infrastructure uh, demands to ensure that we are uh, supporting the uh, actual development of communities. There are tons of uh, master plans, uh, transportation master plan projects that have been in the county's budget for decades. They've been partially funded, they've been studied, restudied, uh, realigned, and we are not doing things simultaneously. Um, in the city of Gay, this bird, we were able to pass a comprehensive master plan to redevelop the entire Lake Forest Mall. Uh, we had numerous meetings with residents. Uh, we went back to the drawing board to incorporate the comments and feedback. We looked at the different types of housing. We looked at duplexes, triplexes. We looked at the uh, alignment of the Bus Rapid Transit CCT, uh, the approval of the um, uh, Watkins Mill interchange.
Fifteen seconds.
We want to ensure that any new development that comes along has those same personal considerations. And that can only happen with someone who's experienced with planning and developing and actually passing a master plan. Thank you.
And uh, Gabe Albernaz.
Thanks, Amanda. Beginning on a lighter note, whenever I hear the term master plan, I always think that would have been a great name for a seventies or eighties rock band. Um, but uh, in terms of um, master plans, I greatly prefer uh, making decisions with regards, especially to infrastructure and growth through the master plan process. Because it does take so much into account, including a very open and transparent process by which we solicit feedback from the communities that are gonna be most impacted by the decisions that are made within master plans. And um, I don't think we should rush through legislation that is going to have a broad stroke impact. And there are important um, reasons for zone text amendments, and in fact, I introduced two ZTAs in my first term. The first was to eliminate the sale of e-cigarettes and vaping products within a mile of our high schools and middle schools. And the second was to eliminate the sale of ghost guns, because that was the only thing that we had at our disposal uh, to push back against these, this terrible technology that the, thank goodness, the General Assembly has now since passed and banned. Um, but I think that uh, we need to create more steps in the process and be more methodical uh, in ensuring that a diverse set of voices are heard, especially those that are the most impacted by the decisions that we make on the council. That's why we hit the pause button on Thrive to ensure that we do have much more uh, participation in that process. And I agree with some of what my colleagues have said before. I don't think Thrive in its current form does several things. One, take into account existing infrastructure issues, and infrastructure is stormwater
Fifteen seconds.
It's making sure that we have sufficient sidewalks. It makes uh, and and we have to take all those things into account very deliberately as we think through Thrive moving forward. And uh, we have not completed that process, but we will make sure
Time.
we end up with a product that we can all be proud of.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, next, I'm gonna turn it over to Paul for the next couple of questions. But before I do so, I just want to say, um, if a candidate asks for clarification regarding a question that's just been asked, then going forward, that that should not, will not count against their time in answering the question, just to clarify that. Um, so, uh, Paul, take it away.
Right, and to make everybody's life easier, I'm going to cut and paste the questions into the chat so you can see uh, the question and also the order in which it would be asked. That's so the candidates can have some time to prepare. So, here's the first question. Uh, the lack of affordable housing in the entire region is a serious problem. The MPDU program doesn't address the overwhelming need for deeply affordable housing. What would you do to protect existing deeply affordable housing and increase the production of new deeply affordable housing to meet the increasing demand from existing and new residents in the county? So Evan, you're up first.
Uh, thank you, Paul, and thank you for posting the question in in the chat, which I can see. So, uh, really important question because it is extremely expensive for longtime residents to continue living here in Montgomery County. And I am not only concerned about people's ability to afford living here, I am really concerned about the uh, ability of our kids and our grandkids to afford to live here in Montgomery County. Uh, Montgomery County already has the highest, uh, the 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 oldest residents per capita in the entire DC region. Uh, we have more older people living here than any other county in the DMV. Uh, and if we want to maintain vitality, if we want uh, a a good tax base to provide all the services that we want, we need young people moving in here, just like with social security. And we have to figure out how to make it more affordable. Uh, one of the ways that we can do that is by continuing to increase the Housing Initiative Fund. And that fund not only goes towards building more affordable housing, but also protecting affordable housing. And it is a multi-pronged approach. There are a number of buildings that are getting old, that are already old and that are affordable. And I think we need to protect a a number of these units. At the same time, uh, there is a housing shortage, and we need to increase our supply as part of the supply of uh, law, uh, supply and demand in economics. And that is why really we need to protect existing affordable housing. We need to invest more of our budget
Fifteen seconds.
so that we can protect and deeply subsidize the creation of new affordable housing, and we need to build new housing as well. It's all of the above.
Thank you. Uh, Scott, uh, you're next.
Thanks, Paul. Uh, you know, I I don't, I don't think talking about housing policy needs to be boring. So I come up with a term called Noah's Ark. Noah is naturally occurring affordable housing and Ark
An arc is a long period of time. So the housing that we build or don't build today. Is going to be the housing that's available or not available 25, 50, 75 years from now. So we need to understand that this is so important because the decisions that we make today or don't make today. Are going to have ramifications well past most of us are are on this earth. So some ideas that I have are, one is called social housing. So the government owns an enormous amount of land and the second highest cost driver of building a building. Is acquiring the land. Recently, the county executive put out a request for proposal for 19 different sites to to build affordable housing. I think that's a good start and I think the council has done a very good job with the Housing Initiative Fund and adding money to that. But we need partners throughout government who are serious about. Robust vibrant housing projects. So social housing is mixed income properties that have. Affordable housing, at-cost housing and market rate housing on the same project. Exhibit A is the council office building. It is in need of a little love, for lack of a better term. It's right by a downtown. It's right by our courthouses. It's right by the Rockville Metro. It's right by a number of bus stops. It is a perfect opportunity to both increase housing and have a government facility that badly needs to be renovated. For at least partially by the entity that's that's building the building for us. There's a lot more that we can talk about housing. I've been in the housing industry for 15 years. I started a small business almost right out of college. But housing is a choice.
Time.
People deserve to have a roof over their head.
Thank you. Tom, you're next.
Thanks, Paul. I'm so glad you're focused on affordable housing. I really wish we had more than two minutes. We need a lot more allies focused on preserving our existing affordable housing and building much, much more. We're not at all making the progress. We need to make to preserve the quality of life in Montgomery County for future generations that we've all enjoyed. I serve on the Board of the Council of Governments. We're, you know, the appointed representatives of 24 governments in Washington and Virginia, DC and and I'm sorry, and and Virginia and Maryland. All of whom hired the smartest consultants we could find at the Urban Institute. Ordered them to to do a regional housing study and based on the data declared a regional housing crisis. And we went back to our 24 different jurisdictions and the Montgomery County Council unanimously declared an affordable housing crisis. We all held hands around the region and in Montgomery County, we agreed to build 4,100 units a year. 75% of which need to be affordable for 10 years in a row. And we can't do that by ourselves as the council. We need a full partnership with the county executive, the executive branch. And with our private and nonprofit and for-profit developers to make that happen. Last year, we built 29% of that goal. So we are nowhere near the commitment that we made to the region and we need to get much more seriously about it, to much more serious about it. We need, this affects everybody, not just though even not just people that need a house. We have so many senior citizens who are trying to downsize and want to live closer to transit and other amenities, but they can't find a new home to move into. This totally affects our young people that are graduating from college. And not able to move back to Montgomery County. So we need to spend much more than we do, just like they do in DC. Muriel Bowser spent a billion dollars over several years. To create affordable housing and to build more. And we just passed, the council did, a new fund to preserve naturally affordable. Affordable housing in the budget we just approved.
Thank you very much. Will, you're next.
Yes, thank you. Great question. A lot I've worked on here and it's a very important issue and it's an issue I think can bring us all together because no matter whether you're. Young person trying to move in or a senior trying to stay here or everyone in between, this is a huge issue. But particularly in the deeply affordable side. So what do we need to do? The three Ps. We need to produce more housing, different types and sizes. We need to preserve affordable housing that we have. And there's multiple strategies there and we need to protect renters. Increasing part of our population, up almost 40%. And so what do we need to do? Increase the MPDU level. There's no one solution here. It's been at 12 and a half percent since the seventies and some places it's 15. We need to get that up to 20%. It's baked into the cost of the land and we need to get more off the top. And in the fight, when people go for financing, it's already, the cost is already there. We can move that number higher so we can get more. That we don't have to pay for as taxpayers. Two, more money into the HIF, into affordable housing. And we've done that. It's part of the Fed Committee and the council. We've put $50 million into a revolving fund for HOC. We put 40 million to preserve existing affordable housing in this budget. That'll go to our nonprofit partners. We need to continue to increase that because it costs money to develop. We recognize that. So we've done decent there, but there's more to do. We need to utilize public land. I've I've introduced a proposal that anytime we develop on public land. At least 30%, I introduced a bill that didn't get considered unfortunately, at least 30% would be affordable. And that 15% of that 30 would be affordable at 50% or below of area median income, more deeply affordable rates. That's a start. Need to do that. And then finally, we need to protect against rent gouging. I proposed a bill to do this and we passed it during COVID, but we're seeing these rents go up 15, 20%. You cannot allow that. It's not stable and it's not good for renters on the deeply affordable side. So we need to do all of these things.
Thank you. Lovia, you're next.
So affordable housing in the city of Gaithasburg, I'm very proud of all of the. Projects that we've been able to approve as we have our own independent planning commission. So we make decisions independent of the counties. And so we've always had the 15% affordable housing. We have seven and a half percent of our affordable housing is at 30% AMI. And then we have 60% AMI area median income, which is closer to what workforce development is. And so we've been able to have a pretty robust affordable housing stock and it continues to grow. It grows because we've repurposed commercial buildings like hotel spaces. And recreated housing like efficiencies and senior housing. A lot of our hospitality industry is not going to recover and so we can repurpose those buildings. We can also repurpose county owned properties. Another great thing that we did is we work with our landlords to ensure that we can preserve and update. Current existing affordable housing supplies. There's also an opportunity to create public-private partnerships. The Emory Grove Church just yesterday is now repurposing some of their church land to now build. Affordable housing through a public-private partnership. Federal programs like the CDBG grant, the Community Development Block Grant. Or the SHOP program, the Self-Help Home Ownership Opportunity Program. Can provide more opportunities, not just for renters to find stable housing. But for us to work with other partners to create and expand pathways to homeownership as well.
Thank you very much. Great.
Thanks, Paul. Well, just a couple of weeks ago, the council passed a record level of investment in. Helping to ensure that we do hold the line on. Attainable housing and affordable housing that we currently have within the county in the moment. So. There was a really exciting project that recently I had the opportunity to go to the ribbon cutting for, which was. An apartment complex in Tacoma Park and the developer had been looking to. Or the owner of that property had been looking to sell that property to developers. But working with the Montgomery Housing Partnership, the county was able to help purchase that particular property. And thus retain the 30 plus units in a way that is accessible and affordable. To an area that is very close to transit. And while that's just one project, it represents what we're going to have to do a lot more of. And so there's three categories here at least. One is ensuring that the county meets our nonprofit development community. Part of the way to help underwrite the cost and take advantage of opportunities like the one that I just described. We also need to take advantage of low hanging fruit. I agree with what Scott said earlier, which is that, you know, we do have a lot of county owned land, county owned property, county owned facilities. That we need to look to be more creative with, such as when we recently added language. To fully explore adding affordable housing on the redevelopment of the Chevy Chase Library Project. That's important. And then we also are going to have to. Make sure that we are very cautious and judicious when we upzone and that when we look at our master plan process. We ensure that we place a premium and priority on retaining the affordable housing that we already have. We're we're not even going to dream of adding more if we can't keep what's currently on the books.
Thank you. And then Randy.
So this is the number one question that folks are asking in Montgomery County because it is so critical for all of us. And one of the things that we need to understand is that affordable housing doesn't naturally occur. It is the result of the decisions that we make around how we shape public policy, whether it is the way, the where and how we allow development to happen. Or where and how we determine that different communities or different people deserve infrastructure and amenity investment. So we have to align. Of maintaining affordable housing with the things that we say we want to see. And we have to use a clear standard for what affordable housing means. In the housing community, it's very clear. That means that residents shouldn't be spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs and in some cases more than 20%. If they are a low or moderate income residence. For someone making $15 minimum wage. That means that they're looking for an apartment that's about $600 a month. For someone on a fixed income, that often means that's closer to $300 a month. And we need to understand that we are only going to get to those kinds of affordability targets if we are very specific about how we invest in affordable housing. That means not solely relying on the MPDU program, which was an innovation when it was created 50 years ago, but needs updating now. Needs an increase in the percentage, but also making sure that we are tying any development incentives. To the specific production of deeply affordable housing, making sure that we are supporting community development corporations, community land trusts and other community actors. To come in and create affordable housing using tools that help us control the cost of land. Other colleagues have mentioned things like social housing, like using county owned land, partnering with other entities to use their land to build affordable housing. We need to be enabling all of these tools to be used with the urgency that is required to meet the needs of our community.
Thank you. Now, the next question is one where it's going to take me longer to actually say it than to get the replies because it's a yes, no answer. So according to the county code, an independent people's council can protect the public interest and promote a fair. And full presentation of relevant issues in administrative proceedings. In order to achieve balanced records upon which sound land use decisions can be made. This office was established in 1990, but was not funded in 2011 due to budget cuts during the Great Recession. Recently, the county council voted unanimously to remove funding of 200. 224,000 out of a $6.3 billion budget to reestablish the office of the People's Council. Other local jurisdictions in Maryland have an office of People's Council. For those not on the council, which is sales, gold, book and books. If you're elected to the county council, would you support funding for this office? Yes or no? So Lorian, if you could give me your answer, please.
Sorry, can you repeat the office, the question again, please?
The Office of People's Council. If you're elected to the county council, would you support funding for this office?
For the People's Council. Well, in the city of Gaithasburg, we created.
Yes or no answer, I'm afraid, because we have time constraints.
Yes.
Thank you. Scott. Yes or no?
I heard two minutes and answers. So as an attorney.
I know, but we have time constraints, I'm afraid.
Then I'm not, I'm not going to answer it under that respect because it's not necessarily a fair or easy question to answer in a binary state.
Randy.
Yes, I would support funding for this office.
And to the sitting council members, will you support funding this office of the People's Council in the next supplementary budget request? Gabe, you can go first. Yes or no?
Thanks, Paul. We're going to have to weigh it with all of the other tough decisions we've made through the operating budget process. I do appreciate the. We, I was sad we didn't get to this this time. I'd like to get to it next time.
And Evan?
Sure.
Tom?
Yes, I I've supported that. I've talked to the county executive about it. I know the committee took it out and I wasn't really sure why that was or. Or why it ended up on the consent calendar, but in any case, I was, yes. I'm a, I'm a big supporter of the Office of People's Council as I am the Inspector General.
And Will.
Yes, in the Fed Committee, I said, bring us back exactly what you wanted to do and Meredith Wellington said she would and I said we'd introduce the separate one appropriation. Which I would support once they knew exactly what it was going to do.
Okay, over to Amanda for the next question.
Okay, this, this is going back to allowing a two-minute answer. With a 15-second warning. The term environment. Encompasses many different aspects of how we live and work and how we use our land. As county council member at large, what will your top environmental priority be? And how would you implement it? We are going to start with Scott. Scott Goldberg, you're first.
Yes, no, I'm just kidding. So I think we have to kind of start on a big picture. I think we need to get all 1.1 million residents. And all of the businesses that operate and live in this county. Involved and enlisted in the fight against climate change because I think we've we've skipped a step. The government is doing a lot of great things. Electrifying vehicles, putting solar panels on roofs, doing transit oriented development. But we haven't asked, we haven't had that JFK moment. Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. So I think we need to get people involved, right? And whether that's starting big from retrofitting their houses or driving electric cars to some small things such as. Providing a financial incentive to. Throw away less waste. So if I said to you, if you agree to use a smaller trash bin. We will charge you less. Through your property taxes or charge your private hauling company less or give it, give them a credit. And thereby you a credit to just throw away less waste. About a third of the waste that we throw away. Gets to the incinerator is compost compostable. So if people can do that onsite and on their homes. We can incinerate less and that is actually a good first step into closing the incinerator at some point in the future. Just a couple of ideas, but again, big picture, everyone's going to get involved in this. We all live on the earth. Our future generations hopefully will live on the earth and we've got to take care of it.
15 seconds. Thank you. Tom Hucker.
Boy, Amanda, I need more than two, two minutes. So I chair our Environment Committee. And this has been, you know, in many ways, my life's work from working for professional environmental organizations. Like the Sierra Club and the Natural Resources Defense Council to work in the state legislature to the the county. We need much more, I'll just say alignment with state policy on this because. Because what we can do for the environment is largely constrained by state law and our, our, my, you know, my focus on that and ability to work with. Our state legislators. It's one reason I'm supported by our House Environment Chair and the Speaker of the House as well. We have to aggressively implement our climate action plan, which I funded after it was zeroed out in the. The budget we received in 2019. The largest source of carbon, start at the beginning, is is built our buildings, which is why. I sponsored and the council just passed the biggest climate bill in our history, the Guild Green Buildings Now Act, which. Which fences off $18 million to the Green Bank from our energy taxes, which will be a multiplied. Leveraging private funds to create $100 million in low interest loans to create thousands of jobs to retrofit our buildings with insulation. Window, new windows, an energy efficient HVAC system, et cetera. Will save our, our building owners and their tenants tens of millions of dollars and reduce our carbon pollution greatly. We also have to make our land use and our housing policy climate friendly, which was not covered with our climate action plan. And we're aggressively. And we're aggressively moving toward, but not fast enough, moving toward electrifying our county bus fleet, both the ride-on fleet, and of course, there's an overall contract now for MCPS, which I was pushing for, for the last six years. We have a long way to go, but we're headed in the right direction. That's one reason I want to return to the council. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you. Will Jawando, you're next.
Thank you. Very important question. The Climate Action Plan that we funded, and that was one of the first actions we took when I joined the council in twenty nineteen, is to say, okay, what do we, if we have a climate emergency, we need to act like it. What do we need to fund and in what order to have the biggest impact? We've taken some steps. We know the, the buildings and transportation are the two highest emitters. And we've taken steps on the Building Performance Standards Bill. Past that, now we'll need to have those accompanying bills, and then we'll need to have the regulations and make sure it's implemented with fidelity. We've taken steps on transportation, as was mentioned, with the greening of the fleet, the school system being one of the first in the nation to head in that direction in a major way. We've taken some steps with, with solar in the ag reserve in a, in a measured way, and we'll step, look at that and come back in the next year to see how that's going and see how we can accelerate that. So I think one of the other things we need to do is to remove plastics, single-use plastics from the waste stream. That's something that is, I've been working on here and we'll have more to talk about. That would be a priority for me in the next term. And I think we also need to get really serious about this electrification effort. I co-sponsored a bill with Councilmember Reamer, and which the county executive is supporting, to really ramp up our, our movement towards getting off dirty fossil fuels and getting off of those types of energy. And it's, we're going to have to have a smart way to transition and make sure we support people who need help transitioning.
Fifteen seconds.
But we have to do that. So I think those will be some of the priorities in the next term. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Loriann Sales, you're next.
Okay, so part of my SMART agenda is tackling climate change through multimodal transportation infrastructure solutions. I'm proud to have been named the Environmentalist of the Year by the Gatvisburg City Council. Prior to being on the council, I've worked at the Muddy, at the Nature Conservancy. I serve on the board of the Muddy Branch Alliance and was the past co-chair of the Interfaith Partners for the Chesapeake. And so when we think about our environment, as you mentioned, it is more than just the climate. It is about the ecosystem that we live in. And so ensuring that we have access to clean water, we're advocating for telework to ensure that we are not concentrating people in traffic to continue to emit greenhouse gas emissions, supporting transportation solutions like bus rapid transit affordability, better connectivity to job centers and such, also affordable housing density. If we're going to continue to build these fifteen-minute communities, we need to ensure that we are meeting our affordable housing supply demands as well. And then, of course, the building codes. We have to lead by example. We have to ensure that we are making sure the county-owned buildings and any new residential and commercial developments have those standards to ensure that they are, you know, making sure that they're resilient buildings and low carbon as well. The Climate Action Plan that I was able to participate in is a great document that can be used as a strategic guidance to evaluate our climate change goals as we go year after year and how we reprioritize plans.
Thank you. Gabe Albernaz.
Thanks, Amanda. So I had the opportunity to visit Toronto before the pandemic started and was pretty blown away by the comprehensive composting initiative and plan that they have in place in the city. We are light-years behind when it comes to composting. And last year, in the General Assembly Session, Delegates Tarkudian and Solomon introduced legislation that is enabling legislation that will allow Montgomery County to be more aggressive in its composting approach. I've had conversations with Dr. Monifa McKnight, and there's great interest in piloting a program through MCPS beginning next year, in which we do a robust composting program that we hope to take system-wide and then eventually county-wide, because I think it presents a unique opportunity for us to be able to catch up and address what I believe is low-hanging fruit in an issue that we absolutely have to address. One of the most significant pieces of legislation that I worked on along with Councilmember Hucker in this last term was legislation that now requires that there be an environmental analysis for every bill and budget line item that the council decides moving forward. Because we can't fly blind anymore. We can't have unintended consequences and, and actually create more problems than we're trying to solve through some of our pieces of legislation and have to look at all of it through a climate lens. And I think enacting the overall plan, one step at a time, is going to be very important moving forward.
Thank you. Brandy Brooks.
So my top environmental priority is reducing greenhouse gas emissions from building energy use and transportation with a deep equity and justice lens. I believe that this starts with making sure that we are heavily and urgently shifting the priority in our transportation dollars away from increased single-vehicle transportation and toward a really strong bus system, toward bus rapid transit, toward making sure that our walking and biking paths are safe, as well as making appropriate improvements to light rail and commuter rail infrastructure, where those would be beneficial to our communities. Again, this is a huge equity issue because not only does it help us to make sure that we are shifting and addressing climate change, but it also helps us to make sure that for residents who don't own cars, that we are making sure that transportation around Montgomery County is efficient and effective. We also need to make sure that residents have the ability to access renewable energy sources, not solely single-family homeowners, but especially both owners and renters in multifamily units through a strongly support things like community solar projects that really allow us to do much more solar energy generation within our communities and create kind of community solar hubs. There are some great examples of that happening across the country. We need to make sure that the benefits of reduced building energy are being passed along, especially to tenants, so that, again, economically, that that is equitable and is benefiting the folks who are most harmed by the way that climate change is impacting our communities. And these are tremendous economic development opportunities that we need to look at in terms of really deeply investing in folks being able to build out sustainable energy, sustainable waste management, and other kinds of green infrastructure in our communities.
Thank you. Evan Glass.
I appreciate the question because one of the first things I did after leaving journalism and getting more civically involved was I joined the Board of Conservation Montgomery. And I know that there are a number of people on this Zoom who are affiliated with that organization. I was proud to be a, a founding board member and continuing to work to make sure that we have a sustainable environment here and where we lead by example. The, the fact is, fifty-two percent of our carbon emissions in Montgomery County come from our infrastructure. And I was proud to support the Building Energy Performance Standards here in the county. And I'm also really glad that our colleagues in Annapolis have passed the strongest Building Energy Performance Standards of any state in the country. And so I know that we're going to be bending the curve on our infrastructure energy use, which is why I've been focusing a lot of attention on our transportation sector, which is forty-two percent of our carbon emissions. It's one of the reasons why in the first budget since joining the council, I led the initiative to make buses free for all kids all the time. And after that became part of our budget, youth ridership increased fifty-seven percent. And that shows that when we reduce barriers to entry, more people are going to ride public transportation. And yes, we need more electric vehicles. We need to work with Pepco to get more electric charging stations, not only for vehicles, but also for our buses. And then one other thing, I mentioned in my opening comments about composting. We need to continue our work towards zero waste. And earlier today, I was actually up in Germantown.
Fifteen seconds.
I was at Butler's Orchard with the Butler family and also Compost Crew, because Compost Crew is installing a new composting facility there. And so we got to do more with our waste management as well.
Done. Great. Thank you all for, for those answers. And I just want to let you know, we are keeping an eye on time. And we know that we're, we're pushing up against nine o'clock now. We did start a few minutes late. If it's okay with you, there, we could do one more question, one final question, and keep it to one-minute answers, just to be respectful of everybody's time, and then go on to closing comments. And I also just want to mention, we have received some really excellent questions in the chat and, and questions that deserve answers. And so the Civic Fed has offered to compile those and send them along to the candidates. And so if candidates want to answer any of those separate from this forum, then you would have that option. So I'm going to turn it back over to Paul then for the last question, if candidates agree to a one-minute response.
Looks like we have-
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up, which is great. So, and it's a very short question to go for a very short answers, but it's one of those things where it could get complicated for the answer. And I'll do the same thing again, I posed the question in the chat and the order in which we'll ask the candidates. So on police and public safety, what are your recommendations to improve public safety in Montgomery County? And Tom, if you won't mind being the first person to answer this question. You're on mute.
Yep. Thanks. Thanks, Paul. Yeah, I don't mind at all. I, I'm lucky enough to serve on the Public Safety Committee for the council. Public safety and crime is a, you know, it's a complicated issue. So I'll try to talk about it as a short-term and a long-term thing. Oh, there's one minute, sorry. Short-term, we need to fill the vacancies in our, in our, in our police force that we've had for a very long time, particularly in Silver Spring. We are now finally paying our police competitive salaries with other jurisdictions and even our own municipalities like Rockville. We just did that in the current budget, and we need to use our police resources correctly, prioritizing patrol over specialized units, keeping specialized, keeping important units like carjacking units and, and car theft, which was shut down, you know, earlier in this, in the last four years. Police accountability is a huge issue. I sponsored the law to review body camera footage after two officers abused a five-year-old at East Silver Spring in my district.
I'm sorry, Tom.
Long-term, fund addition protection.
Thank you, Tom. Will, you're next.
We need to write, think of community safety more broadly and address the underlying causes of interpersonal conflict, especially coming out of COVID, while we make sure we focus our public safety officials on the most violent crime and not low-level offenses. We, we've taken steps to that in that regard. We don't need police. They don't want to respond to people dealing with mental health or homeless or experiencing homelessness, and they shouldn't. And they're not the best people to do it, and it leads to disparities and, and, and things that are happening not in the right way. We don't need them responding for, responding to low-level traffic offenses. But we do want them responding to violent and serious crime and solving those and preventing those. And then we prevent it by investing, making sure people have living wages, housing, food, and, and a good job. So we have to do all those things. I've been proud to be a leader on it. We've made progress. We have, still have work to do in all those areas. And I'm sorry, I have to leave, but I appreciate you. I hope you'll check out willjawando.com. Take care, everybody.
Thank you so much, Will.
Loriann?
Yeah, so we all want to live in safe communities. We all deserve to live in safe communities. And so how can we create better relationships between the police and the community? How can we address the root causes in a more proactive and holistic way to ensure that safety is prioritized, to ensure that training is prioritized, and to ensure that all of those wraparound services, like the housing, access to mental health needs for not just residents, but also our officers, ensuring that training includes bias, anti-bias training, de-escalation training, that this is an annual requirement, and that we pay competitively so that our officers can continue to work where they live, and we are growing that workforce from our schools within our educational system to fill the vacancies.
Thank you so much. Gabe?
Thanks. This is an important question. So step one is addressing the underlying issues that are leading to an increase in crime. Much of the crime is being committed by people under the age of twenty-four. We need to re-engage and recommit to positive youth development. We need to reactivate Safe Silver Spring and those communal places where we engage in more constructive dialogue within our community and help problem-solve issues that are on the ground. We need to address recruitment and retention issues among law enforcement. Sixty-two percent of police officers are eligible for retirement as I'm speaking to you right now. And we have over a hundred and seventy-eight vacancies within our Montgomery County Police Department. There were thirteen people in our last cadet class, and two have already quit.
Fifteen seconds.
We have to ensure salary and compensation is commensurate with the challenges of the job. And we have to do everything that we can to help take better advantage of technology and meet the community where they are.
Done.
Thank you very much. Brandy?
We need to understand public safety much more holistically in a way that really supports the dignity and well-being of every member of our community. By overrelying on policing and our definition of public safety, we've created the perfect storm of conditions for a terrible relationship between communities and police and just grievous loss of life in some instances that we've seen over the past several years. We need to understand public safety as encompassing public health, as encompassing an end to poverty and homelessness, as encompassing making sure that our young people are deeply invested in to grow and thrive throughout their youth and that their families are invested in and protected. And that's going to mean taking a hard look at some of our resources and how we align our budget and our priorities so that we are addressing the root causes that ultimately allow us to look at public safety comprehensively.
And Evan?
We all ultimately want to live in a community where everybody feels safe and where everybody's civil rights and liberties are protected. And that's the balance that we're trying to strike here. And, you know, more than a decade ago, I was, I was proud to serve on the board of Safe Silver Spring with Alan, with our friend Tony Hausner, and, and with our, our good friend Woody Brosnan, may he rest in peace, with a focus on community policing and making sure that we understand the communities intimately. And that's why in this last budget, I introduced and my colleagues supported an effort to expand our cadet program, which is basically an internship for young people in the community to become police officers. It is the true definition of community policing, where people know the communities they serve and are representative of those communities. And in the chat box, I'm going to drop a Washington Post op ed I wrote about it so you can learn more.
Thank you. And Scott?
So we're, the last couple of years, we're in a transitional moment between public safety and policing. And we've never had the conversation as a community of how we want to be policed. We are a civilian-led police force, just like the military at a national level is civilian-led. And we get to decide how we want to be policed, whether it is the absence of police or an officer on every corner or something in between. But we haven't had that conversation, so it's a little bit confusing for both the community and our public safety personnel. That being said, any criminal justice expert will tell you that economic options are the number-one thing to take care of crime. If we can be intentional about giving our young people those options, we can attack the root cause of crime. We can do targeted enforcement in hotspots. We can do targeted enforcement in hotspots on temporary bases. But we can, and at the same time, we can hold our public safety professionals to the high standards that everyone deserves.
Thank you very much. I'm handing over to Amanda for the very last closing remarks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes, so again, being respectful of everybody's time, we wanted to offer any candidate who would like to make a closing remark, one minute. You can use the whole one minute or just a portion of it. And we were going to go in reverse order from introductory statements. So Lori Ann Sales, if you would like to make a closing comment.
Yes, I will. Thank you again to the Montgomery County Civic Federation for the extensive outreach you have done over the course of the year. Again, I'm running to bring trusted, tested, experienced leadership to the county council. And I am so excited about our five-point SMART policy agenda that calls for strengthening our commitment to education from cradle to career and beyond, making a living in our county more affordable, advancing local food production in our Ag Reserve, recovering equitably from the pandemic as we recover our economy and tackling climate change through multimodal transportation infrastructure solutions. I encourage you to visit my website at loriannsales.org, and I hope to earn your vote on Tuesday, July nineteen. Thank you again for joining us this evening.
Great, thank you. And actually, that's a good segue for me to remind candidates, if you'd like to mention your website or drop it in the chat, then now is a good time to do that. Will had to leave understandably. And next we have Tom Hucker.
Well, thanks, Amanda, and thanks to all of you for all the hearings you've testified at, the letters you've written, the effort you put out year in, year out to educate residents at events like this one. We get a better county because of all your work. It's a shared value of mine for decades, that we can work together to make government more effective and more responsive. And we do that when we bring more people and more voices into the process. That's why I believe that experience matters. You especially know how intricate and complex government can be. Again, I was elected by my colleagues to serve as vice president and president of the council during the last two incredibly difficult years. And when the year was over, Dr. Fauci said the council did a great job under my leadership in keeping everyone safe. The president of the NAACP said it was the best council she'd ever worked with in twenty years. And an affordable housing group gave me an award for our record investment in innovative programming. I think that's pretty good for one year of leading the council during a pandemic. With at least five new members, I believe I'll add a lot to the new council to bring institutional knowledge and experience to work very closely with you and our continued partnership. Thank you. Hope to earn your vote.
Thank you. Scott Goldberg.
So what gets me excited about this whole process is a quote that I like to remind people. Politics is the art of the possible. Fifty years ago, before billionaires started flying airplanes really high up in the sky, the government and the country said, we are going to land a human being on the moon, and we did it. Now, fast forward to today, we have a lot of challenges still right here on Earth. But knowing that we can accomplish big things together, as big as we can dream, we can do those things. We can feed people. We can house people. We can improve our schools. We can make sure we're not sitting in traffic, you know, for days on end. We can do all of these things if we can work together, if we can find the funding, and we can find the votes, and we can have big thoughts and understand that whatever the process is, at the end of it, we're going to be successful. That's a Montgomery County that I want to spend a long time in. So thanks a lot for the conversation.
Evan Glass.
Thank you, everybody, for taking time this evening to join us and for all of your advocacy over the years and months to make Montgomery County an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. That is why my husband and I have lived here for decades. It's because we are a wonderful place. We're a welcoming place. And, you know, over the last four years, it has really been an honor to work with all of you in a trusting, open way. And that is really what I think is my hallmark, at least in this first term, making sure that your emails are returned, that your phone calls are answered, and that we talk about the important issues. And we try to figure out, try to figure out a way to yes, because that's what our residents deserve. That's what our future demands, and I look forward to continuing this conversation into the future.
Thank you. Brandy Brooks.
I'm running because I believe in democracy and self-governance. And I believe my career has been constructed around the belief that when we gather together as a people, we get better decisions when we have made sure that all of the voices in our community are truly heard, are supported to be present, and are supported to be part of the decision-making process. And the measure of whether we've done a good job isn't solely whether the folks in power feel good about that, but is whether or not residents in their everyday lives feel that there has been the shift that they need to ensure their well-being and feel that the questions that they've had about how their government operates and whether or not it's going to meet their needs have been answered for them. I'm committed to building the kind of processes and to engaging in the kind of conversations where the people of Montgomery County can feel very directly that we are working together to answer and produce solutions for the most critical issues in our communities. And I hope to earn your vote on July nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. And Gabe Albernaz.
Thanks, Amanda. Great job facilitating. So thank you, Civic Federation, for all that you do. It has never been more important than right now. We have Bethesda Beat, Washington Post, trying to do the best they can, the whole align on providing local media. But it pales into comparison with what we once had. And so organizations like the Civic Fed are now more important than ever to help ensure accountability, to help ensure transparency. And I appreciate the very thoughtful approach from which you all presented some really important questions this evening that I know we couldn't completely get to. I love this county, and as is often the case in every election, we're at a crossroads. And we have to keep moving forward and keep out this chaos that we're all feeling at the national level.
Fifteen seconds.
It has been the honor of a lifetime to serve these last four years, and it would be an honor to have your support for another four. You can visit gabealbernaz.com. I dropped it in the chat, but thank you all so, so, so much for this evening.
Great. Well, thank you. And it is nine fifteen on the dot. And so I just want to send a very quick thank you to our committed and our impressive candidates. You made my job and Paul's job easy this evening, and I got to sit back and listen and learn some things from your responses. So again, cannot thank you enough for being here tonight, especially on a holiday. And I will let Paul say a couple remarks, and then Alan, if you want to close with anything. But again, thank you all so much.
Yes, just a reminder that we did capture all the questions that were asked in the chat. And Alan will make sure the candidates will get the questions. And then if we have any responses back, that'd be posted on the Federation website or social media and all social media. And the website is montgomerycivic.org. Right, over to you, Alan.
Thank you very much, everybody, for joining us this evening. A special thanks to our candidates and to everybody in our audience. We nearly got to a hundred. But I think everybody learned a lot from the really impassioned and educated, informed opinions of our candidates. We're going to be in good hands in the next county council. So thank you all so much for joining the Civic Fed on this holiday evening. Please stay in touch through our website, montgomerycivic.org. And we look forward to the next conversation sometime in the early fall. Thank you all so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you all. Have a great evening. Take care.
You too. Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.